Evening. Meeting of the Board of Adjustment for the Borough of Somerville for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been that on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. A copy of the notice specifying the daytime and location is posted on the board outside of Borough Hall, given to the clerk administrator, mailed faxed or emailed to the Courier News and posted on the Borough website. Any member believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time. Hearing none. These proceedings are of a judicial nature. Only those items that are on the agenda will be addressed. Proper judicial decor must and will be maintained. Next item, floor call.
Chairman Adair.
Here.
Mr. Demings is absent. Ms. Carpenterz here. Mr. Videmsky.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin advised would be absent. Mr. O'Neill.
Here.
Mr. Alad.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
We have four. Any conflicts? Would someone move that the absences of Dan and Morton be recorded as excused? Move second alligator.
Aye.
Next item, flagrant raise.
Flagrant raise to the flag of the United States of America and to recover what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes. Would someone move for the approval of the minutes of the last meeting? The regular meeting and the executive minutes?
Seven.
Second. Second, any discussion? Move call please.
Chairman Adair.
I'm staying.
Ms. Carpenterz.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Alad.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
We have no resolutions. Land use application. You're right.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Council.
Good evening. For record, I'm Richard Fleischer, representing the applicant Patricia Gary.
For a long time, Mr. Fleischer.
Can I have this story, sorry?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Gary. Would you please stand and raise your right hand? You saw we swiped the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, so hope you got it. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Patricia Gary, G-A-R-A-Y.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fleischer, you're with us, sir?
Yeah, first of all, I've got a number of pictures that I've already premarked. A one through.
You may have to, they may, they may, I mean, I'll let, I'll let you do. I don't know whether we still use the same numerics that we were using before. Okay, good, all right, that's fine. You'll identify for the record?
There are pictures of the property that we're asking for relief from.
Mr. Fleischer.
Mr. Pack, can you identify this pack of pictures that is?
Mr. Fleischer.
I'm sorry.
Can you answer a question for me?
I'm trying.
I've been, I've been in this town for a long time. Is it bartide or bar team? I can both.
I've heard you call both.
Okay. When I used to deliver newsbreakers every quarter time, okay.
Pack, can you identify this pack of pictures that I distributed to the board members? Here, I'll put it in my house. A one is in front of your house.
In front of the house.
A two is the picture of the right side of the house.
Yep.
And the white that you can see in the background on the right side of the picture is the fence that the Mr. Gary had a question about?
Yes.
Selfish as the delta of the road if you want to answer to the base. And on A three is a picture of the left side of the house and shows portion of the fence closer to the front of your home.
That is correct.
Correct. A four is the left side of your home, which shows the area where you proposed to put the addition.
Right, correct.
A five is the back of your house where you propose to add a deck.
Right.
Then A six is a picture showing what the fence that surrounds your pool looks like.
Correct.
Can you describe your home as it currently exists?
We have a two-family. I live on the first floor and the second floor is rented.
To your knowledge, has it always been a two-family home?
Yes.
Your deceased husband's parents acquired this home in nineteen hundred and fifty-two?
Yes.
When was the first time you became familiar with this property?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
And as a result of your marriage to your deceased husband? And was the house at that time in the same condition as it is at the present time?
And we did have to replace where the foundation on the left side.
And that was because?
Tree stump should have been there.
And do you know approximately when this home was built?
Best my knowledge, around nineteen hundreds.
The first deed of conveyance that you were able to obtain were in nineteen fourteen.
Nineteen fourteen.
And you assume then that this house has been the same since nineteen hundred and fourteen?
Well, I believe that my husband's parents could be back version of the house. This picture A five, that for the back door, that we made out of that.
But you don't know.
I don't know.
Do you currently reside in the house, is that correct?
On the first floor.
And if this application is approved, do you intend on continually to reside in the property? Has there ever been a time when the house was not a two-family home to your knowledge?
No, I don't know.
As part of your application, you submitted a rendering of the improvements that you proposed to make. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna open that up. I assume I don't need to include or include this or mark this in evidence, since it's already part of the application.
So you copied or what you already filed?
Yes.
Not immediately mark it.
Could you maybe, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Could you maybe? Maybe I can move it over as well.
Maybe a little closer to your table. You know, a little bit, I think helps. One other way to get a little here.
I don't know if you can stand up and turn around, but I've done some markings on this plan and all of them. To answer some questions about what I've done. You can understand the color. Just the word can see this.
You want an easel?
Do you have one that I can use?
Gives everybody a better chance to sit. Have any engineers to take a chance?
Wait for that, Rich.
All it's saying is lawyers, as lawyers need to take life.
He usually's pretty, well, the ball of two for eleven. All right, try that.
I'm gonna release. Thank you very much. Thank you very kindly, I appreciate that.
While it's difficult to see, there are some dotted lines on this plan, which signifies what it assists today. So if we can start with the second floor, are these two bars for discussion purposes the outline of the kitchen that exists on the second floor?
That is.
And what is the distance between this galley kitchen?
I'm gonna say probably about six feet from, well, a truck.
But the actual distance between the counters is what? Is it wide enough to open a stove door?
You can open the door to look at the size to get anything out of it.
And can you open the refrigerator door?
As long as you buy the right size of refrigerator.
Right, this area to the left of the galley kitchen is the bathroom?
Yes.
And you come up the stairs and enter the house? Okay, so this is being closed off with the plan. What's the headroom in that area?
Sixty-eight inches to seventy-eight inches. Sixty-eight from one side to seventy-eight.
Does this make it difficult for tall people to walk upstairs?
Makes it difficult to get anything up the stairs.
And this is the existing bedroom with no closet?
Correct.
We'll let the architect address what's proposed. But going back to the first floor where you currently reside, is the top is bedroom one, bottom is bedroom two, and the bathroom is the dining area right now. So the current bathroom is in the back of the house.
So there's no current bathroom there. There's the back of the bedroom.
Where's the current bathroom?
Current bathroom.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Where the toilet is.
And that's right across street, across from the dining area.
It's right next to the dining area.
And people who live in this house, what difficulties do they have with daily activities?
It's not very well laid out and the bathroom being right next to the dining area makes it kind of awkward when you have something to do center.
All right, and of course, there's no privacy.
No, no privacy.
If you're coming out of your bedrooms to take a shower, otherwise use the facility. And you know, we'll let the architect address the other changes. Was there anything else you'd like to add about the current configuration of the house? So this survey doesn't depict what is behind your home. But does an alleyway exist?
Yes.
Is the alleyway used at all? Do you use the alleyway?
Well, we maintain it, yes, we cut the grass. And our shed is on there.
And has your family maintained, your husband's family, you after your husband passed away, maintained that area, an exercise of renewal control over that area, including placing the fence on that property? For how many years? Almost, oh, is that in the? To the right of your property is this green acre, is it not? If you look at the map depicting the area within two hundred feet, there's a white line that I've colored orange. And is that line Peter's Brook?
Yes.
And is it in close proximity to your property?
Kind of close, I would say.
Well, can you give me an estimate of how far Peter's Brook is from your home?
I'm gonna say definitely, no kidding.
And is there a steep slope?
Yes.
In years past, did children go in the woods in that green acre area?
We still do.
And was there a severe rainstorm at one point in time which caused the eventment of Peter's Brook to fall into the Brook along with several orange trees? Were you concerned for the welfare of the children in the area at that time? And did you contact the municipality about it again? Now, I know you don't know why the fence was built. And after that contact, the Borough of Somerville erect the white fence along the boundary line of your property in the green acres. The fence is not yours.
The fence is not mine.
Your shed, which was also a question about, is on the lane which we just described?
Yes.
And you have a, I guess I have the letter, but did you contact the tenant about the lanes as well?
Yes.
And in two thousand and twelve, did you receive an email from the municipality's prior zoning officer?
I did.
Can you identify that email?
It stated Monday, February thirteen, twenty twelve, of Frank Bueso.
And can you read it to the board, please?
It starts in the bottom.
Let's start from the top.
This is Trish.
Is that B U O S L?
B U O S O.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
This Trish, my read of this is that no one technically owns it, not even the Borough.
You can continue.
And then there was an email from Brendan Allen to Frank Bueso. So it says, "The ownership of the alley lies in the state of William Ross, who sold off the lots and left the alley not completed. The owner is responsible for the maintenance or any other overriding agreement. There was an attempt in two thousand and two to file quit clean deed by the adjacent owner, U. Poffey, as part of the site plan approval process, however, it was not filed, but I can see in my search. I do have a draft in my file, however, I thought the intention back in twenty, two thousand and two was the intent to obtain quit cleans from the Borough as well as the adjacent property owner."
Again, you've identified that you had some sense of renewal control over this property for in excess of twenty-one years. I think it's at seventy, if I read.
Correct, yeah.
Can I have this marked there, let me say seven?
Yes. Please mark it any certain date today, please.
Yeah, if we look at this here.
Council, could I ask a question?
Certainly.
In terms of identifying your ownership of the property, could it have been called open and notorious?
Yes.
In other words, that?
Open that for a hostile under claim of right for an excess of twenty-one years, which is?
No, no, I know where you're going with this, I just wanna make sure we touch all the bases.
All right, my pictures aren't as good as yours, but does this picture show the shed in the property?
Yes.
You can have these marks, I believe, A eight. I think there's one for every board member. Mr. Engineer? The engineer also questioned a driveway encroaching. And I believe if we look at the survey. Ah, sorry. I knew it was somewhere. You have this marked, I believe, A nine. Take a pen and this circle. The encroachment, which at least to me appears to be minuscule. The area that I've circled on this
Yes.
survey, the area where the driveway is alleged to
Yes.
where it encroaches on the green acres. Would it be your hope that that minuscule encroachment is permitted to exist, or at the very least that you could give an opportunity if the board sees fit to approach the Borough engine? Borough Council could perhaps lease that small area?
Have it be in my house.
And in the worst case scenario, you will remove it?
I guess.
There were questions about?
You're saying remove the fence?
No, no, the driveway encroachment. Engineers raised questions about your attic in your basement. Is the entire, well, can you describe whether there is a basement and if so, what it consists of?
The only, it can only get in the basement through the door of the wall.
And that's exterior.
Exterior, yes. And the only part you can stand up in is the area that's under the kitchen and relocated anywhere in the apartment. The back of the house and the front under the living room is crawl space.
I believe you told me that the height of that basement is six foot four inches. There was also a question about the attic that the engineer raised.
I had never been in the attic and never seen it, I think it's real slow, that's the fourth.
And based upon the scaling that we did on the architectural plans, the height of that is also which four feet six inches, I recall, and something, I think four feet six or four feet eight, yeah.
And was your testimony, you've never been in the attic?
I've never been in the attic.
My treasure's up there.
I'm sorry?
My treasure's up there.
I doubt it.
I just wanna make sure the record is.
Now I'm gonna go look.
It's probably not a bad idea.
I know my husband was up there, I had never been up there.
Now, another question the engineer raises about the chain link fence on the left side of your house, does that belong to you?
It does not.
So I believe he said it was encroaching, but in fact, it belongs to the neighbor and it's on the neighbor's property.
Correct.
There's a stone patio behind your pool, which the engineer raised a question about. And I guess his report assumed that the area behind your property belonged to the municipality. He had some concern about, again, minimal area of stone that extended beyond the swimming pool fence, is that correct?
The stone is within the inside of the fence.
So the deed boundary is inside the fence?
Correct.
It extends a minimal amount into the
Correct.
lane area that you've maintained as your own for the last seventy-plus years.
Correct.
And you would hope not to be required to remove that stone?
That's slimmer actually, yes, that's slimmer, yes.
And will the home be the same color, will the addition, if the board approves your application, be the same color as the house?
Yes.
Is there any central air conditioning in this home?
Yes.
That is part of the renovation that permitted units intended for central air in the home. And those units would be placed behind the decks. And to answer another of the engineer's questions, you're gonna be using composite decking for your deck?
Correct.
You're permitted to build them. I have no other questions for the application.
Anybody from the board have any questions on Mrs. Gary's testimony?
Yeah, I do. Very simple, I went down, I looked at you walking your property, but I went down and looked around. Has your property heading toward the Brook? There's grass that's maintained, mowed and taken care of. Resumes some's yours and some's the Borough's?
We mow on John, the right along the fence, that we had asked Keith Hendershot years ago because we had poison ivy coming into our yard, and he said, yes, you could mow that to stop the encroachment of the poison ivy.
So in effect, you're maintaining Borough property. Thank you. Nobody else is doing it.
Any other questions?
Anybody else from the board? Anybody from the audience have any questions on Mrs. Gary's testimony?
I have to call my next witness, Mark Marion.
Good evening, Mr. Gary. You saw we swiped the testimony about the unit this matter will be the truth, hope you got it. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Mark Marion, I N A R.
Thank you very much. Sir, council, your witness.
Can you be the board's benefit of your education, can you spare your time?
Yes, perhaps graduate of seven, I think, or no, eighty-two. Got licensed in eighty-nine, been practicing on my own since ninety-one. Been a full four, twenty-three, something like.
Been up for a full 20 years, something like that. And my license is still in good condition. Did you prepare the document which I've denoted as schematic plans of elevations for the raid addition? Yes. Did you design the addition so that the side yard, front and rear yard setbacks for within the building endures? Yes, sir. Yep. That was the goal. Did you speak with Mr. Gray and obtain her objectives? Yes. What were her objectives? Twofold. One was to increase her living space on the first floor and make it more open and kind of modern. It's very chopped up. The dining area that she's referring to is really more of a... Let's start with the beginning. You enter in the front of the house on the left. It's a shared entry. There's a set of stairs going up to the upstairs unit, and there's a door into her unit on the right. You enter into her living room. That's pretty much gonna stay. Then you walk past a bedroom, which is in the middle. There's a dining... She uses it as a dining area. It's open to the bathroom. It's really more like a hallway that leads you to the kitchen. And then, in the back of the house, the kitchen's pretty nice. It's good size. In the back of the house, there's a small bedroom and a laundry room with access to the backyard. If you go upstairs, which are probably just tight, the top of the stairs, it's very low ceilings, very tightly trying to get into a broken up second floor, pretty hodgepodge arrangement. It has a bedroom in the front, little dormer. Just, gosh, some people use it like it's like a closet. And a very narrow galley kitchen. It's about six and a half feet wide. And there's a living room in the back. And the whole goal is to make these units more up-to-date and open, kind of more open floor plan. So, on the first floor, we opened up the kitchen and the dining room together. Moved the dining to where the bedroom was, and we moved the bedroom that was there to the back. So, both units still have the same number of bedrooms. First floor, we are adding an additional bathroom. We're keeping the bedrooms similar size that they're gonna be to the back and left. Still leaving access to the rear. We are increasing the size of the deck. But when you enter per unit, it's gonna be like living room, dining, kitchen, very open and modern. Not so chopped up as like a 1920's house, but a couple additions slapped down there over there. Upstairs, the unit, we're gonna improve the access into that unit. We're gonna move the bedroom to the back and create again like a living, dining, kitchen area that's all pretty open and more modern and marketable. Modest increases in sizes to two units. The upstairs unit right now is like six, around 645 square feet, and her unit is around 1100 square feet. We're gonna add 350 square... We're proposing to add 344 square feet to the upper unit, getting it close to 1,000 square feet. And her unit, we're adding around 294 square feet, and that'll get her up to around 1,400 square feet. Nice, the kitchen's gonna remain about the same size, real nice dining room. Living room is the same. Modest increase in the bedroom size. And a much more improved flow of the house. And upstairs, we are gonna have a laundry room unit to do upstairs, because that unit has its own laundry. And moving the bedroom to the back and opening it all up, so it's gonna be a nice, large space for kitchen, dining, living. And an improvement in the bathroom also. There's a big bathroom. It's gonna be a nice bathroom. So, we're asking for a floor area ratio increase or variance. We're only 146 square feet over, based on, and that's counting just the lot that's heated to her. I have no idea how much area it is behind the, I guess, the paper street in the... Regarding the coverage, which we're also asking for a variance for. Existing house and pool is already over. It's substantially over. A large portion of it, 34% of it, is the pool and the patio. And improvements around the pool have delayed around 2,500, over 2,500 square feet devoted to that pool area. And that's the bulk of, I think, the reason that we're over on our purpose coverage. We're adding around 398 square feet of coverage. 157 square feet is increasing the deck to make it actually like a usual deck. Right now, that rear porch is really just a landing. You can't eat or do anything on it. So, we have modest deck that she actually could eat at. And if you discount the pool and all its improvements, you would be at 34.5%. Which would comply, but the pool definitely drives us over. Just one question. The gray area on the plan that you put the board represents the additions upstairs and down?
Correct.
I have nothing further than this, Larry.
Anybody from the board have any questions on the testimony?
I do have a couple questions. A lot of numbers came out. They don't break that fast. They don't... They never want to look, but I don't hope they're enough. Does not get that many. The actual expanded... The exact... How many? About 294 feet is the expanded footprint of the first floor of the house? I think that's the number I called.
The footprint of the house is growing by 241.
241.
Total?
Total deck, 398.
Yeah, the deck goes to 400... Well, the deck is going to... Oh, we didn't really even count, but the deck's gonna be 157 square feet. That includes an area of the... That existing portion's in the back of the stairs. We're improving it by 157 square. I think it should be 398.
Are the utilities already split? Are you gonna split utilities to meters?
I do not have any actual questions. I pay for the heat and hot water, and I would like to split that.
Good idea.
Especially with the rents and the...
Gonna be able to carry that some utilities or...
I currently don't know.
Where's the pole on your side of the street or on the side?
On your side.
Any problem to get over it?
I'll shoot the gas and water though.
Yeah.
Anybody, anybody else from the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony? Just keep my Mr. Marion.
Good evening, Mr. Chadwick. All right. I know you're a little... I don't want to make you... Thank you. You saw how we started the testimony. You're about to give him this matter. It'll be the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes.
Please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
Ron Chadwick, C-H-A-D-W-I-C-K.
Very good. Why should you witness?
Yes, Mr. Chadwick, can you give the board the benefit... Sorry, I don't need to qualify. Can you give the board the benefit of your reasoning why you think that the use and bolt variances that have been requested by the applicant are appropriate in this particular case?
There's an area of floor grass between the...
Eight, ten, I believe?
It's a little...
Eight, ten.
And it outlines the property and puts it in a saying for those who have not been there recently. Expansion under the use. Not the hurdle that is a straight use variance. You've driven, you've wrecked, the extent of this is pretty small. It's like the building you cover is about half the size of this room. The deck is, I'll give you the deck where I go through it. And the pool is a substantial portion of the coverage. And if that pool over tops, we have more problems than we wanted to addition. To go to the basic proofs, does it affect or alter anything in the neighborhood? The building's been there for 100 years. It's part of the neighborhood. It doesn't... It actually would be more attractive with the additions. The improvement, I believe, advances the preference of municipal agents law. The items of A, G, I, M, A being, it beats the particular suitability test. It has been there for, I'm confused, it is part of the neighborhood. In terms of the improvements, it improves the general character of the borough. It also provides radical light in the air. You have a testimony that conforms with all the setbacks. Clearly will be an improvement in terms of aesthetics. It's described by the architect, and it is a efficient plan. Final analysis. The questions as to the architecture, setbacks, et cetera, I think the attitude will be addressed by both the applicant and the architect, and I won't repeat those. The negative impacts, which is the other side of the coin on this type of an application, there are none. It simply takes what is old, obsolete apartments and rearranges them with, really, I think, quite a small alteration to the basic structure itself and makes them into functional apartments. The bathrooms off living rooms, not a good idea. I think everybody can appreciate that. The positives are, as described by the applicant. The number of encroachments that were spoken to in Mr. Cole's report, I think, again, were addresses in history to all of this stuff. You'd have to do, spend a career knowing what went on with this property unless you live there. So, white fences are hers, keeping cutting grass that do deserve a public contribution. Other fences that appear to be over the line are rightfully over the line because they're next door neighbors' fence. So, in terms of all of those encroachments, I think they've been addressed, but for the driveway issue. I don't know whether the driveway was there, would the borough cut the property and not... I did not do that research. If it was in place before, it's an exception. If it wasn't, then the applicant has offered to go to the borough council and request a license to leave there. We're talking a license and a fourth. So, it's not like it's really... And it's, in this section of the feet of a park, there's no public access. We're in the long distance. Unless you're a milli-boat. Pretty steep bank. In brief, and my judgment, the thing is a positive. The application is a positive. The borough, it takes old dysfunctional residential units and makes them into new modern units, which is a benefit. The borough, we see no negative impacts resulting from the proposal, and I believe at least the testimony are approved.
Anyone from the board have any questions on Mr. Chadwick?
Probably Billy Goats in there, Larry.
It can be.
That's a steep bank.
Anyone from the audience have any questions on Mr. Chadwick?
Pleasure.
I have nothing further.
I just have a couple questions. On the roof leaders, some of them are buried. Do you know where the discharge point is?
I do. Can I bring you some?
On the west side, they, the leaders run under the driveway to the neighbor's side. And the east side, there is clay piles. A clay pile drain that runs under the pool deck and out the back of it to the west.
Okay, so I know. So, one daylights to the unnamed alleyway, and one daylights to the back of the view.
I have two other questions if I may.
For me?
Yes. Do you know what, how long that driveway has been paved as it is?
I believe it was 96. We just follow the line of the fence.
I can't even see it sealed.
One last question. There are 28 homes on the board time street. I did not...
Yeah.
How many of those homes are two-family homes?
Eleven.
Nothing further.
Well, I have a question on the sidewalk. The sidewalk was never, as far as you know, installed, correct?
Sidewalk.
In front. There's no sidewalk.
No.
The last three houses, Rich, you walked.
There's no sidewalk in the last three.
And the argument is, where are they gonna go to?
Right.
Right, exactly. And then I have the question of the board on the street tree.
The tree's good.
So, that's the end of my questions. You have everything in the report. The compressors are gonna be in the back, next to the new deck.
Yes.
You have two compressors there.
Yes.
We've addressed a PVC pan in front fence. That's on borough property maintained by the borough. We've addressed the encroachments into the alleyway, saying that it's in no man's land or the borough is not taking ownership of that. So, that addresses all that. We've addressed the sidewalks. I'm hearing from the board that they're not worried about the street tree. So, that leaves the minimalist driveway encroachment. And then we heard about the aesthetics with the architect and you, about why we're doing this. And then you're gonna match, the roof's gonna match, the sign's gonna match. So, this is gonna be in addition to what's there.
Correct.
It's 240 square feet to the east of a kickout for the actual footprint. The rest of it's internal going up. Talked about the deck. Deck is a 10 by 15 surrounding the existing landings with the architect, and I agree with the architect.
Yeah.
I think that covers everything in the report, and then John, Mr. Chadwick, gave the proof on the plan.
You satisfied with it?
Yeah.
Did you speak with any... I, you know, there may be people here tonight, but did you speak with any of your neighbors in connection with the changes you were gonna make?
Yes, sure, yeah.
Okay. Did you answer any concerns they may have had, or?
I believe so.
All right.
I believe they had any concerns.
I just, I don't ask that to, you know, I need to make a complete record.
Yes.
Anyone from the board have any... You're done, Mr. Chadwick?
I'm done. I'm just gonna move into a public address here.
You're going to. Anyone from the public have any comments on this application?
Or further questions?
For the record, please state your name and address.
Frank McAllevia. I live across the street from Trish. Her property is kept immaculate at all times. And she's a great... And she's a great neighbor and I have absolutely no problem with what she proposes to do.
Thank you, Mr. McLevy.
Your full privileges are, are better.
Mr. McLevy says it's good, it's good. Mr. McLevy is a well-known figure in this town. Anyone else?
Anybody else?
Anyone from the board, any questions? Or comments?
All I'll say is I'm with you. I've never been in my attic either. And I know when she was going, there's no stairway. Forget about it.
Okay, someone want to move out to close the public quarters? Move the second wall, okay? Cliff, what do we have?
Uh, I just confirm with Mike, the only condition, the only condition other than our standard conditions of approval is compliance with his, with his November twenty-two, twenty twenty-two report or any amendments there too. And I think that's the only condition, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, put any amendments there too.
I always say that because if he had any, if he, if he updated, I don't believe he did it.
Now, it's usually, in this case, I think Rich is going to go down to put the bulk table on the plan. Do what? The bulk table. Okay. Yes, on, uh, page three. Usually the bulk table misses a few things. As you say, put the bulk table on, catches everything. So in the future, the applicant can say that this was previously granted in two thousand and twenty-three at this meeting.
Nothing's going to change up now, the plan is going to be the plan.
Right, that's correct.
I usually put amendments there too, and within the, the standard conditions of the resolution, just in case. If for some reason there was a supplemental for, it doesn't mean, means you're starting for.
Right, we're going to put the, the email from Frank Baroso in the file, so that's the email. Saying there's no, uh, no, the borough takes no interest. We have the test on the PVC fence, so that's in the transcript. It's going to probably be in the resume, but it's going to be in the transcript. So we, we covered everything, Rich, but the only thing that needs to be done is just the bulk tables, which is a cut base.
We're not taking chances now, we're not moving fences.
No.
We're not doing anything.
We're not doing anything because of the reasons correctly stated.
Yeah.
Someone like to move the application?
I'll, I'll move it.
Move by Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second it.
Second by Miss Corpiris. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm looking at the summary of variances, so just want to make sure we understand each other. The maximum improvement coverage, the power of variance, if we're not, if we're not, that's a bad issue.
Yes.
Floor area ratio, it's probably going somewhere we begin with, but that's a bad issue. The type of property, the two family has been for a hundred years since. Other sidewalks, do you agree that they're not necessarily variances? And you're in the lane of street tree. That's my motion.
Okay, move, second. Any, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Carpennis?
Yes.
Mr. Vodinsky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Olaf?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alperas?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Yes. Hope you're great.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good night, Mr. Chadwick.
Good seeing you.
Next application, two of the east names. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. I don't know where my lunch there. Or my team is. Uh, my name is Mike O'Grannick, I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw. We're seeing Warner, Gillespie, and Fisher here in Somerville. Um, I'm here on behalf of, um, the applicant, Two Hundred East Main LLC. This application consists of two lots that we intend to consolidate and merge into one lot. Uh, the two lots, uh, the one lot, block fifty-eight, lot three is owned by Two Fairmont East Road LLC. Uh, that was the old Genova Insurance, uh, building. And then block fifty-eight, lot two, is owned by Doech Family Associates LP, that's the bank. Subject property is located in the professional office residential POR zone district. The two existing buildings, again, historically operated as a, uh, bank. It was also at one point a childcare center. Uh, and then most recently it's been operated by the Doechs family as their real estate office. That's, uh, the block that I indicated, uh, block fifty-eight, lot two. The other property was historically the Geneva, uh, Genova Insurance office with a residential apartment above. Uh, and that's two oh four West Main. Uh, as many of the board members may be aware, this property has been, um, predominantly vacant for many years, other than the Doechs family, uh, operating. Uh, and it's been on the market for lease without any prospect of tenants. Um, the lack of interest in these existing structures, uh, and these, what I would describe as obsolete uses, use, commercial uses, provided grounds for looking at the property, uh, to, to construct a small apartment project, which is before this board. It also bears emphasis that our, as our planner will detail, that the office, apartment, and bank uses are substantially more intense than the proposed residential use, which is more in line with the surrounding neighborhood. Given this background, this application proposes a complete demolition of the two existing outdated structures and construction of a twelve-unit luxury apartment building with associated parking, landscaping, lighting, and refuse. This applicant requires a de-use variance for the number of apartments, a D variance for floor area ratio, and C variances for the location of the parking spaces, trash enclosure, closures, improvement coverage. Specifically, as set forth in Mr. Cole's planning and engineering memorandum, under Schedule B, maximum improvement coverage, uh, we're at fifty percent, we're proposing sixty-nine point four percent. That's a, that's a, that's a variance. Permitted use, again, what's existing is professional office and a single residence, and we're opposing the multifamily apartment building use. Uh, again, Schedule B, max floor area ratio, twenty-five percent, we're proposing fifty, fifty-four point four percent. Uh, parking location is only permitted in the rear yard under one oh two dash one eighteen E. There is a small area located in the side yard with, uh, one space, uh, in the front yard. It necessitates a variance. Also, under one oh two, one eighteen E, the parking location, um, requires more than five feet from property line where some of the spaces are closer than five feet from the property line. Uh, there's also a potential variance under one or, one oh two, one seventeen, uh, for the trash enclosure in the front yard. There's also five waivers identified, uh, one for lighting uniform ratio or one, uh, under section one oh two ninety-two B. Uh, four to one is required and we're at five point six to one. Uh, my engineer will detail these technical variances under the same subsection, one oh two ninety-two B. Light trespass, uh, less than point five foot candles in, in the rear yard. There's an area with slightly over point five foot, foot handles, again, that's a design waiver. Shade trees, uh, shade, uh, requirement under one twenty-two eighty-eight is a shade tree, one tree for every five parking spaces. For five trades, shade trees required, uh, due to site constraints, we're proposing four, four shade trees. So that one tree necessitates a design waiver. Under section one oh two ninety-three B, waste removal and, and recycling, um, ordinance requires, that the storage and pickup area shall be accessible to solid waste trucks. Uh, and this application proposes a, uh, that the trash and recycling cans, uh, be stored in a, in an enclosed area and then wheeled to the curb for curse cycle. Under section one oh two eighty-eight C, landscaping required around perimeter of the lot. And, and certain areas on the southern property line, uh, there is no landscaping proposed again, that necessitates a design waiver. With me tonight, I'd like to start off with Todd Deutsch, uh, on behalf of the applicant, to explain the history of this property. Uh, we have, uh, Dave Sires from David, Dave Sires Associates, he's our civil engineer. We have, uh, Doug Paliniak, he is our traffic engineer from Dolan and Dean. Uh, we have Arizio Siffalelli of Allies Architecture, uh, he's our red, uh, architect of the project. And to close it out, we have Paul Ricci, our professional, professional planner from his firm, Ricci Planning. Uh, notice has been provided as required by the municipal land use law in the state of New Jersey. Appetavids publication, certified mailing to adjacent property owners and other outside agencies are on file with the board. Uh, unless there would, there's any legal questions, I would ask you to introduce Mr. Deutsch.
Mr. O'Grannick, I have one question. You will note that we're a little short. You're seeking a D one variance, so I want to make sure you're on notice of that.
Understood. And.
I know, before.
We, we'll proceed, uh, you know, if we get through everybody, I think we'll know. I don't know how late, late this board goes, but we do have five witnesses, so.
All right, I just want to make sure when I, I know everybody, when there's a short board, I always give the applicant the opportunity to, you know, make the decision they want to go forward or not.
Thank you, Mr. Vodinsky.
All right.
Well, we're.
And your first witness, sir?
Todd Deutsch.
Mr. Deutsch, would you please raise your right hand? You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your, state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name's Todd Evan Deutsch, D is David, E, U, T, S, C, H.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Grannick, your witness?
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Deutsch, could you give, uh, the board a description and some of the history of your involvement, your family's involvement in both of these properties?
Sure, so, um, we acquired, uh, Two Hundred East Main Street probably over fifteen years ago. That property, after it was acquired, uh, from, from the board to get approval to be turned into a daycare center. Uh, obviously prior to that, that was Princeton Savings Bank and PNC Bank. After the daycare center went out, we, uh, we did try renting that space. We weren't successful, we still maintain a sign out there. But we used to be located over at thirty South Daddy Avenue. And the opportunity presented itself, but we decided we would relocate over to that property. Couple of years later, we thought, we, we wanted to redevelop that, that site right there. And I actually had approached the town, I had some conversations with some people in the town. They said ideally, um, if that were to happen, they would like for me to try to acquire the Genova property next door and merge the two properties together. The opportunity presented itself to where we were able to acquire the, the Genova property. And that brings us to where we are today.
And, um, is it correct that, um, we, what's the, the history of marketing this property for lease to a, a long-term thing?
Sure, so we were trying to, uh, we were trying to rent the Genova property as well. We were unsuccessful. Some uses, some of the uses that, some of the, some of the uses that did come our way were not very desirable uses. One was tattoo parlor, one was, uh, massage parlor. Most likely they never would have been approved anyway. And any, any interest, any real interest in that property, um, by the time we factored in a fit out for whoever was interested, it really became a net loss for, for that property. So the properties really became functionally obsolete and are no longer economically viable. So we believe the, the redevelop, the redevelopment that we're proposing is, is a wonderful use for that property. It sits at the gateway, we're traveling into Somerville coming from the east. We think the project that we're proposing, um, truly represents the amazing, you know, renaissance that, that Somerville is, is going through right now. And we think it's a project that the town will be proud of, the neighbors will be proud of, and the residents will be proud who, who live there.
And what type of tenant do you envision occupying this residential building?
I think, I believe that this project, because it's just on the outskirts of, of, uh, Somerville proper. And they're more, they take on more of the, of like the brownstone in terms of everyone has their own entrance. And there's no common lobbies, there's no common parlors. I think we actually end up marketing this to, um, an elderly crowd.
Five elements of it.
More specifically correct. Are you aware of any, um, just jumping ahead to Mr. Cole's comments, uh, are there any, uh, envi, is there any environmental contamination on the property, underground storage tanks?
So there are no underground storage tanks. Uh, I did have a conversation with, you know, so I've seen Kevin Perf from EnviroRec who's, uh, overseeing, um, what was happening over at Somerville. And he told me that the, uh, the wells are clean, groundwater is clean. And they hope to be actually wrapping up that, that, um, that whole remediation. He said to me that when I appear in front of the board, I can represent that it's, that it's clean. He also said to me that whatever reports he was going to send me, he has to send to the town of Somerville anyway, so. And he gave me the thumbs up.
And referencing your communications with the LSRP, that, that's off-site, um, potential for off, the off-site contamination from the sort of gas agent use procedure.
Right.
Um, and just, um, can you describe what you envision as the, uh, refuse recycling, uh, procedure for this site?
Sure, so we're going to have a separate garbage enclosure area. It's going to be serviced by a private parlor. And, um, they will pick up the, the garbage and recycling, uh, as frequently as, as needed. I mean, we'll start with, you know, whether it's one or two days a week. And if that's not enough, we'll increase it to three days a week, whatever the frequency needs to be to accomplish that.
And just to touch on parking, um, what, how do you envision, from an operational perspective, the, the parking on this site?
Um, well, we have twenty-four parking spaces, uh, plus same account. So that's two parking spaces per, per unit. So I think, uh, in terms of parking, we are, uh, there will be no parking issues.
I have no further questions?
Anyone from the board have any questions, Mr. Deutsch?
I don't.
Anyone from the audience have any questions, Mr. Deutsch?
I just have the one on the basement, Todd. We're going to get to that in an hour or, or do you want to wait for the architect? Very good. Never mind.
I think Mike will, if this was approved, we may want to take a look at it because it is on the cusp of the year three zone. And just, I agree to include that.
Thank you. My next witness is David Sires, he's our professional engineer from his firm.
Is he on? Yeah, really. First time.
Sires, guys.
It's a standing duty.
Do you saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
David A. Sires, S T I R E S, professional engineer and planner, is David Ricci.
Okay, Dave, um, of course you, how many times do you think you've compared before this?
More than most of our members. And we can speculate, Mr. Sires, according to yours. And Mr. Sires, we're going to start with the, uh, interview. And you're on the list.
Okay, look forward to it.
So are you, Mr. Deutsch.
So, um, I would ask you to, uh, mark that, mark the exhibit, the colorize rendering, um, and mark it as A one. Could you provide the, the date of last? Could you provide the, the date of last revision for the record?
What my renderer does is she just changed the date. So this is a March 15th, and it's entitled Rendering of the Site Plan. It's somewhat of a composite between the landscape plan that we have and zoning information on the first sheet of the unit, but it's identical and there's no changes to the plan set that was last submitted to the town. I'll give you that date. Latest revision is 2623.
Mr. Sires, could you explain the existing and proposed conditions for this?
Sure. So lot three, excuse me, it's the two-story building on the corner, the old Janova building, and it's about 1600 square foot building. It has 11 parking spaces on the south side of the property and is separated from lot two by a chain link fence. Lot two, as was discussed earlier, is a one-story brick building, and it has two driveway access, there are one access point on the west side of the brick building and then egress on the east side. And there's a counterclockwise circulation and I believe about 11 parking spaces on the south side of that property. Then there's some fencing that separated the daycare, outdoor daycare area from the parking lot. Chain link fence runs from the west side of that property and then along the southern border with the residential property to the south. It's in a VOR zone. There's a flood elevation along Peters Brook at about 49. That slightly touches over on the, the northwest corner of the property, where that driveway comes in off of Main Street. And our proposal is the 12-unit apartment complex, as we discussed earlier, six over six. There's a sidewalk around the perimeter of the building, so there's access points for each unit separate and apart from all the others. Behind it and to the south is a 24-car parking lot, we want 88 parking space, and it runs basically up to the southern property lawn, and that is based on existing conditions. The pavement, the pavement runs right up to that property lawn currently. And then one other thing I'd like to point out, there's an encroaching along the west side of the property, there's a die rail and some pavement that encroaches onto the burrow property, and all of that will be removed as part of this application. And I think part of the important thing is eliminating the two driveway points on Main Street. And I think there's a large discussion when we did the daycare approval about maybe switching that to a clockwise rotation versus counterclockwise. It's, it was, it was under the DOT jurisdiction, so ultimately it stayed the way it was. But it, it was acknowledged during that hearing that it was an issue. So those, those two driveways are being removed, and all the access will be on South Gaston, south of the building, so we have adequate separation between the south, the driveway and the signalization of Main Street and South Gaston. With respect to landscaping, I think Mike, overall, it's a good plan. We are asking for a waiver on the trees, and I would just note that, you know, overall there's, I think 13 trees. Okay, so there's four shade trees proposed or five are required, and I will just note that just below that in Mike's memo on page four, there's seven street trees required with nine are proposed. So there's a net of 13 trees proposed where technically 12 are required. We just locate them where we go. So the board knows, I met with the applicant and the applicant professionals and the planning advised, and this is the final product, so we went through a lot of the stuff.
We did a lot of.
Everything was cleaned up. Landscaping was very palpable.
So we don't have to make any contributions to the environmental issue?
No, we do not. The other, the other issue relative to landscaping was the, I guess, the buffering along the southern property lawn. Again, that area is paved currently and we propose to leave it. What we're doing in lieu of the landscaping is removing the chain link fence, which is kind of beat up, and installing a white line fence around the south side and also along Peters Brook on the west side. We do have a bike rack proposed on the west side of the parking lot. So utilities will come in off of Gaston, sewer, sewer and water will come in off of South Gaston. Gas will be run from the existing connection to the banks, so hopefully we'll be behind the curb and not have to go out in East Main Street. Storm collection, we're basically running a pipe from the parking lot around the east, the east side of the building, and it's going to wrap around the front, it'll pick up the parking lot, the roof drains. It's a 15-inch existing pipe on the property that ties into the DOT right away, and then drains down into Peters Brook. We are reducing the overall impervious coverage slightly, so we do not require any slimmer retention on this, for this project. With respect to the flood elevation, the design storm for this property is at elevation 49, and our lowest finished floor is at 54.8. So we're, you know, in excess of five feet above the 100 here, and the parking lot is in excess of about three feet.
Is that higher than the banks first floor?
The banks first floor. I think it's about 52, Dave. So 52, so we're slightly higher. Double feet higher. With respect to lighting, we have several poles on the south side of the parking lot that are at 16-foot in height, and then there's some on the north side of the parking lot that are eight feet, and also the north side of the proposed building at eight feet. The, the waiver for the average foot candle or the foot candle requirement is really based on the fact that we're at a lower height, trying to make it more residential. You get, you get that uniformity ratio lower when you have big high lights in a parking lot, so we're requesting a waiver to comply with more of a residential feel for the parking lot. And Mike also mentioned, there's one area where it's a half a foot candle in the rear of the day use property on the south, and we'll add a back shield to that one light to take care of that issue.
Just touching on the stormwater, due to the elevation for Peters Brook, does that impair the ability to construct a basement structure?
It's a concern of the applicant to, the elevation of the basement would be, you know, somewhere below the hook field along your floor elevation, so.
Throw an eye to the, the vapor flood, correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, we were talking about potentially putting utilities down there, and the thought process is we don't want the utilities down in an area that would be impaired by this sort of that.
The next one. Hey, you said you've got 24 parking spaces plus one handicap?
24 includes the one handicap.
Includes the one handicap. And that's what's going to be required by our ordinance.
That's true.
Because when Todd said he was going to try to market this to the, towards the elderly, elderly have handicap placards. It's almost like a rite of passage. When you turn 17, you get your license. Hey, look, I got my license. You reach a certain age, I got my handicap plaque. I know at the American Legion, we had like three handicap spaces. I said, we're going to have to, we're going to increase it by about, we're going to at least double it, because at our age, we need handicap work.
We do have the ability to, to go to two, because we have the ramp, so we could add one on the other side of the ramp. But if we increase, you know, if we have handicapped people, we could add that second one, but if we go beyond two, we're going to start losing parking. There are credits that the governor granted for EV parking, which don't make any sense, and boards are having a lot of trouble with it. So we're, we're installing two EVs parking, charging, charging areas, so they count technically two, so technically we have 26 parking spaces, but we didn't, really didn't delta to that with respect to the plans.
Right.
We didn't take credit for that.
Are the first four units of this apartment all designed for a potential handicap person?
Yes. Yeah, the whole, the walkway, the parking, and the units are all handicap.
I think they have to be. Look, they're adaptable.
They're adaptable.
Adaptable, because I think because there's no elevator, the first floor has to be at about 6%.
Okay, come on. Yeah, with the architect on it. The trash enclosure, Dave, are you going to talk about that, is that the architect?
With what respect?
Material, height, location?
I talked to Todd about it. We like the location. Our initial submission to the town, the borough, was to have the dumpster at the end of the parking fields on the west side. Mike raised a question about how to construct back in the eye of a parking lot, so we located on the south side of the exit at, at the exit out of South Gaston, and we feel that's a good spot, and we agree if you want to upgrade the materials, you can do that.
Yeah, I had comments about, he's proposing the enclosure being six-foot PVC fence surrounded by 94, I think they're 96 gallon or whatever they are.
96.
94, 96. So I had questions about recycling, and based on what I'm seeing, the dimensions of those cans are under four feet, so I had some suggestions to cut the fence down or use a masonry wall or something. And the other thing is on the other side of the driveway for the units, it would move to the north side of the driveway, the, it would be more accessible to the units, you wouldn't have to cross the driveway to drop the trash can. So I think that the idea, the pullouts, curbside pickup, I think Todd was saying private, right, Todd?
Correct.
For the recycling and for the solid waste, I think that makes sense, because it saves the trash truck. It's just a location of, it's the question of the location and the construction. I understand it's pullout, so they're, they don't want to put boulders in it and all that, I get that, but it's still going to, in my opinion, it's still going to get banged up at this PVC, just overused, but.
We'll go with the masonry.
Yeah, and it's the height, the cans are going to be.
Yeah, I mean, the cans are four feet, and the four feet is set the whole, the lower.
Obviously, it's in the front yard setback, so I'd like to have it more blend in, the material, but that's my opinion, see what the board says, but we had some good dialogue on that. It's much better designed than the other ones, being the backup of a trash truck, because we take it out onto South Gaston, it was the least desirable. So, yeah. And then, Dave, you're going to have wheel stops next to the PVC fence on the parking.
Yeah, we added those to the way to see.
Yeah, so that's going to protect the fence, which was a comment.
And with hot box and mailboxes. The hot box, we, we reserve the space on the South Gaston Avenue side of the building for a hot box, the water line that comes in. And with respect to mail, we would like to put communal, what do you call it?
Kiosk.
Cluster. Cluster in that general area.
Why is, why is water company going to require hot box? There's no open height, right?
We're not positive they're going to require, but we wanted to show on the plans.
We dispose of another jurisdiction.
Yeah, I, I think for this small of a project, it's a little bit much.
Domestic lines, what, three inches?
Right.
Fire lines, four inches?
Right.
RBCs would be inside. You have, that's what the little feathers on the, on the side here is for your RBCs.
Yeah.
I guess the idea was to make sure it's off the plan case needed, so I don't want to have an issue of coming back to the board or steel change or whatever.
We're not having, they're not cheap.
Purposes of the record, Mr. Gibbons, we have no problems with any of the items that were raised in Mr. Gold's memorandum.
Will there be any objection if we make compliance with Mr. Gold's memorandum and conditional approval?
No problem.
Very good.
And Dave, I think there is a natural gas generator, as shown on the western side of the building, near the bike rack area, so are you going to talk about that, or is that the architect, or is that Todd, or?
I think the architect will, yeah, we did install one based, I think on your initial comments, and it will be for emergency. It's not going to, it's not going to lay out the whole building, but I think the architect will talk about that maybe.
The idea being apartment buildings, shelter in place should power the laws, so it wouldn't be a burden, a burden, like the board would say, the tenants have to leave, the borough's responsible for housing them. We've been doing this in a lot of planning applications, just having some type of power or something, so there's.
We'll get into that with the architect, because we're going to get into wiring, we're going to be finding heat, we just.
Right, we can get, right. How about the retaining walls, are they running, are they running all the way around?
It runs around the front. It's really just a softened grade, you know, there's quite a rise to those buildings and, you know, we wanted to keep the elevation up because of where we are, so it's just a softened grade.
It's less than two feet. I had a comment on the front, you could actually grade it out.
Yeah.
Along the north side, but I think it's desirable to have it there for an aesthetics and anything. Maybe I can put it around?
I have no further questions, your architect here?
Anyone from the board have any questions of Mr. Sires?
Nope.
Anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. Sires? Thank you.
Okay, Doug?
Yeah.
Doug Lliniak from Golden and Dean, we just have some brief testimony in traffic.
Hey, you'll stick around occasionally, yes, I'll take you with us. Please hear your audience. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Doug Lliniak, D is in Peter, L Y N I A K.
Very good, Mr. O'Grady, your witness, sir.
Doug, could you give the board just an education on your education, your professional licenses and appearance before planning against other boards?
Yeah, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Indiana University. I got that degree in 1998. Since that time, I've been working in the field of traffic engineering. I've been a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for approximately the last 19 years. I've testified before approximately 100 municipal paying zoning boards within New Jersey.
There are three local?
Yeah, I've been to Somerville before, but it was probably.
Lightning.
No, I don't know if it was, yeah, I'd say it was pushing 10 years ago, and Bridgewater, Lockshong War and Vanville.
We're good.
Franklin.
Okay, we sit with you.
Could you just kind of look back at the prior uses and then compare them to the current uses, and what do you see are the benefits of this particular application?
Yeah, I mean, from a traffic impact and an operational perspective, this is a great application. I'd say one of the major benefits is those driveway closures. Uh, I'd say one of the major benefits is those driveway closures along Main Street. Um, you know, they're right up on the, on the signal, right up on the stop bar. So the access is gonna be solely from Gassen Avenue, about a hundred feet from the signal, which means the general standard clearance that DOT would want from the traffic signal. So I think that's a very large benefit. And then, um, you know, the more obvious benefits, uh, the residential uses a low trip generator. And it generates potentially less traffic, essentially those traffic than in bank with a driveway window and an office building of the size we do. Um, when we talk about magnitude of a reduction in traffic, when those facilities are at their peak, it's gonna be somewhere around ten to fifteen to twenty, uh, less vehicles per feet hour. So, um, you know, not often I get to go to a public hearing and say that traffic's gonna be lower, driveways are being reduced, so from an overall perspective, I, this is a very good application. It cleans up the corner and has an opportunity to reduce traffic.
Anyone from the board have any questions on Mr. Polian?
Nope.
Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony you just gave? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Corazio Cipolle. She's our architect.
Just make a, bring a couple things over, give us two seconds.
Don't block the camera.
We're getting this camera right here, right?
You're on YouTube.
Michael, can you use this one?
Sure. Two, we'll pull the, the.
So this will be A two. Can you identify what the A two, what do you want to start with?
Oh. Sorry. So, uh, AS one.
AS one.
Um, this is a material board. It's laid on the dirt. Tape here or?
What do you want to know?
I don't know if we'll block, will block the camera? Let me suggest, can you lean up against, uh, yeah. Maybe lean up against the door.
It's a little heavy, so.
No, I understand. Okay, will your colleague be testifying as well?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You saw this word, the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so hope you got it. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Razio Cipolle. Uh, I'll spell my first name as well. R A Z I O. My last name is C I F O L E L L I.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Grob Gradik, you're a witness, sir.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Cipolle.
Triple.
It's called me, Roz.
Okay, Roz. Could you please provide the board with your educational and professional licenses?
Okay, I graduated Temple University in nineteen ninety. Um, I've been working in this field for thirty-eight years. I'm a registered architect in nine states. Uh, the state of New Jersey, I, I became registered in two thousand seven.
And are all your licenses still active?
All non-licenses are active and working from Maine down to Charlotte.
And have you appeared before and you swore it to the past?
Yes, I believe I've been here once before as well.
Have you appeared before other boards in New Jersey?
Yeah.
Maybe a couple of examples.
Downbrook.
Thank you. Downbrook, uh, I also believe I was in Wrightstown. And I believe I've been here also before.
And Raritan.
Very good.
And Raritan. And Raritan.
Thank you. Uh, Roz, could you, um, identify those exhibits and then explain your, your vision and your?
Yeah, that.
Go ahead.
So A one is a, a burned recycle plant, showing the building, the sidewalk around and the parking. That's the first. Uh, that one's dated February sixth. And so the next sheet, A one, is a rendered color elevation. The rendered elevations, front, rear and side of the building. And I'll explain these and then we can go forward to the next one.
Yeah, and that's gonna be A three. And could you give us a date of last revision for the rendering?
Okay, the rendering is February sixth.
Okay.
A three, February sixth.
Okay.
A four, A two, rather, is February sixth. A three is, um, February sixth, they're all February sixth.
I didn't get that, could you try it again?
Okay, so, um, start with, um, we'll start, I guess, with the, the one comment that was made earlier, just to kind of, uh, with respect to the parking. And if we are going to have more elder, um, senior tenants, uh, these parking spaces, as being the third, if there's two per unit, um, it could be easily a handicap parking space. Uh, there is, there is a side, uh, an alley access for the handicap parking. But for the most part, uh, not all of them are in leadership. But, uh, per requirement, we fulfill those requirements for the handicap parking.
All the first floor apartments accessible or?
Alright, so for the state of New Jersey, we're required to have all units without elevator, uh, all first floor units must be type A handicap. There is no adaptable, we are, there's a type A and a type B. Type A is the most stringent, type B is, is a little more lead. With the type A units, uh, although they have to be designed per handicap and the counters, uh, for instance, an example would be a thirty-six inch kitchen cabinet in height is actually thirty-four. That has to be in place. But the cabinets can be pullout face cabinets so that you can roll under it. The grab bars don't have to be installed until you need them. So, but all the blocking behind the walls have to be there to support that grab. Okay, so these are all type A or A three level. Okay? Alright, um, just we'll start with the building. The building's a twelve unit building, six units per floor. Four units are end units, one interior unit, or rather, two interior units. So we come with a total of twelve units. Um, they range from a thousand square feet to just under twelve hundred square feet, these units.
That's gross, right?
That's gross. It is gross. A couple of things this way. Right, so we have a two-story wood frame structure, slab on grade. And we can talk about the base in a year. Pitch roof, wood framed, um, and, uh, essentially a type, uh, five-beam construction. Five-beam construction is unprotected. However, we are one-hour fire-rated tenant separation walls, one-hour fire-rated, uh, floor ceiling assembly. And then we're also an NFPA thirteen R sprinkler system with, what was requested was the sprinkling of the attic. So we are fully sprinkled. As far as, uh, the exterior of the buildings, we can talk about these, these elevations. We're looking at materials such as brick, uh, vinyl siding, uh, cementitious trim boards and panels, and then three-dimensional roof shingle. These are the colors we were looking at. Um, again, all that stuff can be decided on the road, but for the most part, I think we're here at this point. Uh, let's see, let's move on to the, the building. Sheet, uh, there's a concern, I have this board here because there were concerns about all the penetrations that come through the exterior of the building, correct? So what we try to do is, as architects, we try to limit those, those penetrations. Number one, we don't want as many penetrations through the roof that becomes a potential maintenance issue. As far as the exterior, it's an aesthetic issue for us as well. So we limit for, uh, what we limit our, our number of penetrations through the, the side of the building. This is how we do the, uh, the venting, let's say, uh, kitchen now per code has to be, has to have an exhaust fan. So that'll be there and maybe dryer, the, per unit. Um, the venting that comes up through the roof, we'd like to take those, bring them up into the attic and then sway them to the back of the building towards the parking side. So it's not, you don't see it at a long east main street. That's why we produce the A, one A sheet, which is a, basically a black and white, who'll be able to see. The limited penetrations along the front. Okay, and then in the back, uh, we're not quite sure whether they'll be a little lower, these roof vents, that'll be on the parking lot side. Let's just place that down.
Those vents are for the bathrooms and for the?
The kitchen, kitchen exhaust has to be ventilated or there has to be an exhaust fan in the ceiling. So you're gonna have an exhaust fan in the kitchen and then in the bathrooms, you'll have an exhaust, uh, exhaust fan as well.
Are you gonna heat and cool this place?
So it's gonna be a standard split system, right? So we're gonna heat, right? So we have, um, I guess we're already on the units, so A three. What we'll have is a, a split system, mechanical system within the units and then the condensers or compressors along the outside. Three in each corner, we'll put them in the planning room. All of them. And we are all two-bedroom units, uh, two-bath, kitchen and living room. We try to keep it open to allow the kitchen to open up out to the living room.
You have all private entryways, no?
All private entryways, uh, for these units on the exterior, yeah. No common room. A tenant separation walls are side to side if it's not an end unit and then along the back. Actually, if we look at, oh, there it is behind me, A two as our building plans. So we'll be able to enter here, come up, up into this unit, this door here enters into this, into the lower unit. Um, utilities, as far as metering, you were talking about a couple of things in regards to metering. Yes, so on, on Peter Brook's side, we'll have our gas meters, we'll have a six-inch vinyl privacy fence and then in front of that, we'll probably have some landscaping to soften that up. And then on the other's end of the building, these gas and electric, we'll let it play well, we'll have the electric meters with the six-foot privacy, vinyl privacy fence and the landscapers as well. Okay? Uh, on the Peter Brook's side, we will have a small closet at the end of the building and that's basically your fire suppression closet. So the fire department has to have the access and they access from themselves. So that's the building. It's pretty simple, pretty efficient, no real, there are no common rooms.
And Roz, the apartments on the second floor are over a thousand net. And I think they're slightly smaller than the ground floor because of the staircase.
Yes, sir.
So they're, this is what the board does, I mean, they're nine forty and nine sixty net on the ground floor.
Alright, so on one of our, I believe there's a, we're gonna share it. So, uh, we're looking at units that, uh, net nine hundred and thirty, uh, square feet for the smallest unit. Uh, that's a type K unit. Which is an end unit. That, sorry, that was the interior unit. First floor interior unit, and that's because of the stair and that's the smallest unit. Then we go to, uh, nine forty-one, type B unit, which is the end unit, uh, with the stair at first floor. And then C is the, now we're coming up into the unit, middle interior unit. And C net is one thousand twenty. And then D, the exterior, the end condition is ten thirty. Or, no, I'm sorry, that was eleven seventy-four, uh, seventy-eight.
Washing and dryers in each of these units?
They have a stack washing, dryer in each of these.
Bring the size up because the redevelopment plans, we typically like to see the borough a thousand square feet, so you're?
Yeah, we're, we're a thousand just on the.
We're two-better.
And they're all two-better. That's one hundred and two. And we will pro, provide the emergency power. And we have a little bit to an outlet, excuse me.
The emergency power, how you gonna distribute that? How's it gonna play out?
Uh, my understanding is we have to power up the one outlet and we also have to have some emergency lighting. So if the power goes out, we have to be able to support that. As far as the heat, I was not aware of, or I don't believe we are supporting the heat.
Well, practical application is if you lose heat in the winter, you have to get some problems. I'm not sure how you do it, I asked the question. But if you, if you go with that size, you'll chill pretty quickly. You know, if you have a couple days without heat. I'm just drawing it out there.
We do have to comply with the, uh, latest energy code. And right now, we're having R twenty on the interior walls. And we also have the exterior insulation as well with that. I have to take a look. So we're, we have to comply with the, with, uh, right.
What I'm asking is you're gonna have a sprinkler system in here, you, you don't want any of that stuff to freeze.
Right, right, especially in the attic, we're gonna have to have a draw.
Yeah.
Got to draw. Our, uh, one of the things we also do with the second floor units is we, we'll bring up our fire sprinkler systems, not that we engineer it, but we, we insist on how to bring the, uh, the fire sprinkler system will come up into the first, into the second floor, first floor, second floor, ceiling assembly. And we'll run that way and come up walls and spray through the sides. This way we can stay away from the attic. But now we're also providing dryheads and those will be in the attic.
I think I have some questions about accent lighting. I think you guys said it's wall sconces by floors, unit to unit units. Is there any other accent lighting, Roz, right in buildings or no?
We don't have decks, we have little jewel etts, so, uh, and that was more for the aesthetics. And we do, we put all these up, have the elevations. And you'll see that they're on either side of the windows at the second floor. So you'll have them down by the unit entry doors at the, from the outside. Um, that's pretty much about it. So we'll have our, our doors lit up and then our, and our windows, um, at, at the jewel etts and the jewel etts.
And Roz?
And these elevations.
Uh, we're not proposing any signage for this property. We're, we're intent is to just do a, a number, I don't know about like two hundred, or whatever.
Right.
Whatever your, your post office tells us is the correct, uh, number, but there's no signage proposed.
I should ask Davis, but the lights are LED or all dimmer, right? The full amount of lights?
Yes, they are. Timers and dimmer.
As far as mail is concerned, um, I believe they'll have to discuss with the postmaster whether they want to deliver to the door or do they want to deliver to a key cabinet?
Yeah.
That's, that's the decision of the postmaster.
Yeah, we would ask as a condition of any approval, uh, that Mr. Cole be authorized to, uh, you know, look at the placement, should we, should the?
amend the plan to show a key, should the postmaster require one?
Right.
I'd add on that too is that to get away from the hot box, there's also another water closet if needed for the water meters. That we, and they'll have the, the testing closet.
Yeah.
What was that condition?
Add another closet outside as a water closet and the water company can have access to it.
Right.
That's, that's their biggest thing, want access to everything.
Right, so a lot of times we'll come in, um, some of our designs, we'll come into the fire suppression closet and that's where we'll come in at. And we'll tee off to the fire suppression and then we go into.
Even expand that if you need space for the meters.
Do you want a second water closet?
I'm sure you're. Whatever, you know, just give Mike, do you want to expand that or add a second one if needed? So they don't come back to us.
Yeah, we could, we could probably just expand.
So Roz, every unit on the second floor is gonna have access to the attic, but it's gonna be locked. So the access is gonna be from the property owner, correct? The tenants won't have access.
Access to the attic won't be from the property owner, we're gonna keep those locked.
You're gonna have a hatch, it's locked, but by U, by the UCC code, you have to provide access.
Yes.
That's a great question, okay.
I have no further questions for the audience.
Anyone from the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions?
Anything, Ross, the tie-in scuppers, I don't know if it's Dave or you, we're gonna put some protective for the tie-in. The roof leaders are external, and they tie into the drain system. And what happens with the aluminum drains is they get banged up over time because of dentures. We need to put a protective cover down from the first one.
Oh, you're talking about downstop coming down?
Right.
Because it's a boot.
Cold boot.
Well, you call it a boot, I call it a cover, whatever, I'm just clarifying that. The lower two feet or so, it's gonna be some protective covering to protect the...
Correct, to protect the, uh, the downstop and, uh, whatever. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. And our final witness is Paul Reedy. He's our professional planner.
Mr. Ricky, you've been right in. You saw what we ordered, the testimony, that the defense man will be the truth, so help you God.
I did.
Please state your name and call your last name for the record.
Paul Reedy, our ICICI. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ricky, could you provide, uh, your education and professional licenses to the board?
Sure, um, I'm a licensed professional planner. I've been licensed since the year two thousand. I'm also a member of the American Institute to Certified Planner.
Do you have any questions for the...
Uh, I have, not often, Mr. Chairman, but I have. Thanks, sir.
Go ahead, Paul.
Um, does the board need me to go through the variance again that we're requesting, or can I just jump into my question?
I'd ask that you go through the, why may I ask you to go through each variance you're gonna have, you're gonna need? Because, uh, I wanna make sure that's addressed, anything going on.
Understood, so you don't want to consider subsuming under the D variance, or if you consider that, or...
Well, I know the law does, you know, does permit that, and you know, if the board is inclined to approve this, I mean, I certainly would give that very serious consideration.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure, you know, you touch on it.
I, I will touch upon it.
Alright.
Understood. Uh, the site, as the board is aware, is in your, your professional office residential district. This is a oversized lot. District calls for ten thousand square feet. The lot is twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight square feet, almost two and a half times larger. Um, I know the board knows the area, it's, it's adjacent to Michael Red Park. Um, there's, there's residential properties to the rear yard, there's automotive use back there. You know, there's a smokestack gas station across the street, and right proximate to the gas station, you have two apartment buildings, uh, right there. Permitted uses in the PRR, I'm not gonna go through them all, but it permits single-family uses. It, it permits, it's really an office district, but it allows for residential units on upper floors. So to some extent, what this application is about, i- it is not allowing, you know, residential use on the ground floor. In that regard, uh, this, we're in your PRR zone, uh, it's at the border of the zone, uh, to the rear of the site. It joins your, your, your R three residential three zone. And we're also very close and proximate to your B two and your B three downtown district. I think it's important to recognize, and I'll go through this as part of my testimony, but, uh, your R three zone, which we border, allows, uh, garden apartments, and it also allows mid-rise apartments in the immediate adjacent zone on the rear property line. Uh, those are defined for garden, two, two, two to two and a half story structures, and for mid-rise, three to four story structures. So right on the rear property line, uh, there could be a, a four-story, uh, mid-rise, uh, building. There's also a bunch of conditional permitted uses, I'm not gonna go through them all, but insurance carriers, vocational schools, houses of worship, museums, uh, uh, and the like. In terms of the D one new variance, I know the board is aware, we have to show that the site is particularly well-suited for the use, and the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to your zone plan. Substantial detriment to the public good, that's largely the surrounding property owners, and that's to enhance burden proof to reconcile the admission of issues in this zone plan. We're also seeking a four-air ratio D variance. Uh, that burden is a little lessened, um, in the terms of focuses on the ability of the site to accommodate that increased floor area without a, a negative detriment, uh, to the community. All variances, all D variances have to meet the negative criteria. Substantial detriment to the zone plan, uh, and, and the public good. In terms of the, the C variances, we're gonna be seeking those, uh, under the flexible seat criteria, where we can show advances, a, a purpose of the municipal land use law, and that those detriments also will not be a, a substantial detriment to the zone plan there, to the extent that we could show results in improved zoning, or the benefits of those D variances outweigh the detriments in this regard. I'll, I'll get into that, but largely you heard the testimony from the site engineer. Uh, the variances that we are requesting, uh, is associated with the impervious coverage, that's actually being reduced from its existing condition. Uh, the parking setbacks, uh, to, uh, property lines in, in the front yard, that's, those are all existing conditions. The parking in the front yard is actually being reduced, uh, as well to one parking spaces. So all those conditions, um, are, are existing, uh, or being improved today. So that supports the purposes of zoning, uh, in, of itself. I, I was out there, and I looked at the area, um, as well in terms of the character. I think it's clear, number one, that the introduction of, of an apartment building here would not be changing, uh, the, the character of the area. You heard from the applicant, the applicant has tried to, to market this building, uh, for, for three years and found that to be functionally obsolescent. I think everyone recognizes that it's, um, in, in years past, when there was a, a greater need for, for all plus upon this more, greater need for office and other non-residential uses. I think we all recognize since, uh, COVID nineteen, people working more from home and the like, there's been less demand, and there's been a paradigm shift in terms of, of what communities need today. And it's clear that, I've, I've seen estimates, and I'm a planner, just so you know, Mr. Chairman, and, and six other communities, the board planner as well, I don't just testify for a living. I, I've seen estimates of the need for residential housing nationwide, uh, as close to five million units. So there's, there's a strong need for those residential units and the like, and we're proposing them in an area, uh, that, on a zone line that immediately adjoins where that use is permitted. And to me, uh, that does speak to the particular suitability as well. The case that I kind of mentioned before, that also talked about subsuming variances, it's the, uh, it's the price and energy case, uh, where a board granted a use variance where a use was permitted on the adjoining zone line, that was upheld in the court system. So, uh, to me, that tells me that, that's a factor that this board can consider as to the particular suitability of apartments. Uh, uh, price and energy.
Price versus energy, yeah.
And I think some other distinguishing characteristics here, there is a larger, oversized site here that many other properties, uh, do not exist in the area. Again, I talked about the proximity of, of apartments. And, um, one point, okay, and then also, I mean, as a, well, not a true particular suitability issue, a tremendous benefit of this project as well is the elimination of, of the irregular access driveways on, on Main Street that now would be off of gas, and, and we heard that from the site engineer, I think from the traffic engineer, uh, as well. So that's a, a tremendous benefit also associated, uh, with, with this application. And just a, a few numbers, at least the census reported that, uh, between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one, the number of people primarily working from home tripled from five point seven percent to seventeen point nine percent. And, uh, some of the latest surveys that I, I saw is that, uh, approximately thirty-six million Americans will be working remotely from home by two thousand twenty-five. So the, the point is, um, we also evaluate, uh, particular suitability. One of the points of municipal land use law is the man and need on the, of subsection G. And that's being met as well. Uh, and also, I, I would just mention as a planner, uh, that the applicant here is looking to provide what I would classify as a, as a workforce level housing. Often today, the, all the housing that we are traditionally seeing is either single-family, uh, apartments usually in downtowns near, near train stations and the like. And this is a type of housing, uh, that's traditionally not being created, that's a strong, uh, need and demand, uh, as, as well. Regarding the four-air ratio variance in terms of the ability of the site to accommodate this use, this zone allows for, uh, two, two and a half story, uh, buildings. We're reducing the, the amount of coverage on the site, and I think most importantly here, the applicant is providing, uh, adequate parking. These buildings aren't encroaching further towards residences in a context that those residences are allowed, allowed to have more intensive development in terms of three to four story, middleized buildings. I note that the, also the adjoining R three zone allows for a four-air ratio of zero point five. We're at zero point five four. I think this application is largely, uh, in kin with that standard as well. So that, our increase in floor area should not result in a, at least from a zoning perspective, a negative impact, uh, to that neighborhood. This is a low-scale building, two and a half stories, it's relatively modest project. I thought the architect, the next job of, of designing a, a traditional timeless building that would be, uh, a, a benefit to the community, uh, a beautiful, sometimes beautiful buildings make a lot of sense as well in terms of, of, of how they upgrade an, an area of, of town, that, at least that I like to see, uh, as a planner. We did have a variance for a solid fence, I believe also. Um, the, the intent of that is to maximize, uh, privacy. Uh, that's why we're proposing that fence. We think it, it works, and it's alternative, it's a better alternative for the, for the neighboring, uh, residents. That's why we're, we're seeking, uh, that variance as well. And regarding the, uh, the dumpster, I think the applicant here is, was trying to work with the board to find, uh, the best location possible. I think they're gonna, they're gonna now make it so it, it appears like the building, it may be reduced in size and scale, so it won't feel out of place in the front yard. I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit of landscaping placed around that to help harmonize that, um, with the neighborhood as well. Uh, this application does, this also does support, uh, several master plan goals, housing goal number five, provide a range of housing types to meet varied resident population needs, as well as to preserve established residential areas and promote redevelopment by establishing redevelopment areas. And so, sorry, I'll be quickly, um, I guess that's the New Jersey, New Jersey guideline. Locate housing in select locations within and around the central business district to stimulate business and retail activity behind, uh, traditional work hours. So clearly, this is a type of building that you would expect people to meander into the downtown wall and help support those businesses, uh, as well. Uh, for these reasons, I believe this application advances several purposes in municipal land use law, because the site is particularly well-suited, uh, supports, uh, purpose A, promotes general welfare. Purpose G, um, in terms of meeting the needs of New Jersey citizens, and we talked about the demand and the need for this use. And this is a beautiful building, uh, I believe, um, consolidation of the lots. The replacement with, uh, two largely vacant sites with this, uh, purpose I promotes a desirable visual environment. I would also note, because of the high degree of vacancy in these buildings, uh, over a two-year period of time, they would qualify as an area needed redevelopment, in my opinion, of the local redevelopment housing law. So that's the type of, uh, condition that this property is in today, where this applicant is looking, essentially to repurpose and, and bring it now to a, a functional, uh, needed land use. In, in terms of the, the negative criteria, uh, I do believe, uh, there are changed circumstances here, uh, since the two thousand eighteen, nineteen master plans in terms of a paradigm shift in the need for this type of use that can be considered as, uh, in reconciling the, the admission of these views within this master plan. I also think that the use itself is contemplated in this area in terms of upper floor apartments. It's the, it's the placement of the apartments on the ground floor that, that creates the variance, as well as the fact that this site is located proximate to where, uh, this use is, is permissible as well, if all can be factored into that analysis. Again, um, uh, I believe that the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. In terms of the parking and the layout, um, the site is largely set up in that manner as well, so you don't have cars and the like encroaching onto that neighborhood. The, a, a residential land use of twelve units is a less intensive land use than commercial land uses and other land uses permitted in the zone. So in terms of the public good, this should be a, a, a benefit, uh, rather than, uh, a detriment, in my opinion. Uh, we talked about the increased floor area already. You know, it's comparable to floor area that's permitted on the adjoining rear property line. And because now we're contemplating a, a, a use in this regard that's not anticipated, uh, I believe that the, the four-air ratio variance, because it's consistent with the adjoining district, can, can be, um, can be accommodated without a, a negative detriment. I believe the project also results in implementing, uh, several purposes of the master plan, providing suitable housing for all income ages, providing quality new housing, providing housing for a mix of income levels and, uh, housing types. See, I didn't say anything here. So, I mean, that's, I don't wanna go on too much here. That's largely my, my, my testimony, I think it's an excellent application. Uh, I believe it results in, uh, sound planning for the reasons I mentioned.
You've touched on everything that, you know, we would, we would want, that the board should be able to consider in making that decision, so.
Thank you, sir.
That's why I asked you to go further.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Ricky's testimony?
Yeah, I don't think we had a talk there.
He asked for the longer version. He said, New Jersey thing. Tell you some part I'll play. Anybody, no one? Anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. Ricky's, uh, testimony? Anybody have any comments about Mr. Ricky's, uh, testimony? Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Thank you.
We have no further witnesses, we appreciate the board's time and consideration in this application.
I had one comment to the, Ross, about the backup power fridge. I do believe the heating system is a water tank, a hot water tank. So it's natural gas, so it becomes an issue of just powering the fan. So for heat, a fan is a very, it's not much of a load, since the natural gas is gonna heat the water tank up. I think it is possible to handle heat with the backup power.
I don't wanna get into the heat itself, although I would if it ever did. But it is, and I'm just cautioning them that if you do get a, another storm in cold weather, and you lose your heat, you lose your heat, you're gonna lose your sprinkler systems and your domestic floor. And that's, that's probably not our concern, but I think it might be an issue they wanna consider.
And I think it comes to the shedding part, because I guess each unit's gonna have their own panels.
Yeah, if you look, yeah, that's the problem.
Be hard to have a generator to shed that way.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem, you know, you have to change it.
They do, they have, they're not, they're smart panels now, but that's, we got to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, just, I'm just, I was just talking, and I got, I would put that in a resolution, I'm just throwing it out there.
So Mike, if I understand it right, the shed where applicants are agreeable to modify the, I say the shed, I'm talking about the trash enclosure in the front, to match the building to go to something more durable than the fence, so then we don't need bulb, in my opinion, bulbage. Just a question, question for the board of where it goes on the south side of the driveway, the north side, which is the building side. I think the aesthetics we can all work out, right?
Yeah, we can do basically, I'm, I feel like...
And if we confirm that the trash enclosures are like forty-six inches or forty-eight inch, if it works, that's if we're gonna confirm that the ninety-four, ninety-six gallon cans are that big. I'm just trying to get away from a five, or something, a big mass in the front yard, that's what I'm trying to, to avoid.
Agree.
And, uh, Dave, I, I think you're okay with the, we don't have to go through my report, but I think you're okay with it? Are the applicants okay with it?
Yeah.
Normally you go through the report, but we've done this twice with the applicant, this is the final version, so I, I think they all...
I don't have any issue with any of the conditions.
I just had a question, you had indicated, you know, I wrote down that you would, uh, you wanna be authorized to revise the plans, you know, a little bit uncertain as to what...
So the hot box is a lovely silver box, they stick out by the curb, the water company.
Alright.
If we could get rid of that, usually the water company wants a closet they can enter in by themselves, so I don't know if they'd want to get into the sprinkler closet. So you may either have to expand that and get another door, or just have another closet, but allow Mike to go ahead and...
Right, and you gotta work that out.
Guys, have the flexibility to do that, increase it by whatever it needs to be increased in the meters and...
That and the pad mount transfer, we talked about, that the applicant has no control how the utility companies wants to have, overhead, or no, the load's too big, pad mounted, it's gonna have to be a pad mount transfer somewhere. So I'm looking for flexibility, and so the applicant, we don't think, we can just work that out because they have no control of it.
And if we have to approve tonight, might have to order it right after.
There's, there's two conditions, and the third condition... There's two conditions, and the third condition we discussed is the, is the report, I just, you know, they're the three that I have discerned, so I don't think there's anything else, Mr. Chairman.
I think so either. Want to wrap it up?
Comments from you?
I think you did.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from the board?
Yeah, I like it, and I think it'll clean that corner up.
Good to see.
I was supposed to put the no turn on red there, I guess they're out of on me.
I like it too, my only concern is the, is the traffic, is not just the aesthetics, but also it's really close to the neighbor, and on a hot summer day.
If you pull up to the north side of that driveway, it adds distance.
Yeah, right.
Anybody else? Well, it's like, I know Mr. Deutsch, you know his father and his grandfather, he's like third generation, it's like certain developers come in, it just was like approved, and they always do exemplary jobs for the town, and as I said to Michael, this borders on the R three zone, we may want to take a look at just expanding the zone to include their property, because years ago, when we looked at the creation of the R three zone, there was a mixture of multiple family houses, single-family houses, but the auto industry was there, junkyards, garages, radiator places, and this board, planning board, the council said, we want to phase those out, we want to make it more residential and higher density residential, as can be seen by the apartments that are being built down there, that are going to be under construction. I like it, I think it's going to be all right, especially if it's going to be geared for the elderly.
Mature.
Mature.
The workforce, I believe, is very important in some, the workforce pricing is very important.
Summer goes, summer goes on very hot market right now, very hot market, it's rated, New Jersey Magazine rated fifth most desirable small city and second in New Jersey, so.
It relates to another issue too, well, we were talking about the R three, the P O R.
P O R is dying.
It's dead, yeah, I think we got it.
We said we're going to finish the.
Yeah, you got to get that.
Result, yeah, we started before COVID.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, someone like to move the.
Probably, I'll second.
Move the second, about a two, five. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Meninsky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Alott?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Thank you very much for all your time and help.
It's a pleasure, great board to be here.
Good seeing you, Mr. Alvarez, we'll be in your office. Okay, who we have next? We have a request for a special meeting.
Yes, it's the billboard, the digital board on Route Six, intersection of South Orange, the applicant's request is on the same, and the applicant's asking for a special meeting expedite over.
All right.
So, right now, I do believe it's scheduled in May, as it's on normal schedule, and the applicant is asking to accelerate that schedule.
I thought you wanted the.
Well, it's, they're holding the plea, so now, now since it indeed they're pleading the board, now that the time is, the board can handle a special meeting to address.
The whole day.
The applicant, the applicant's agreed to pay the special fees.
Correct.
Anyone from the applicant?
She's here, she represents the applicant.
Hi.
Your name?
Tia Steinhardt, I serve as Catalyst Vice President of Digital Development.
Did you just spell your last name, please?
Yes, it is spelled S T E I N H A R D T.
Your first name is Tia?
T I S.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything else to put on the night?
You're an executive secretary.
So, I don't know that.
I'm going to try to keep brief.
I do believe the first Monday of the month is special meeting night.
First Monday.
The first, I'm sorry, the first, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's the first Wednesday, I'm sorry, it will be April 5th or April 6th, so yeah, so the question is going to be made by the board.
I can.
Right now, you can.
Jasmine's meeting.
I don't know if that's relevant, because I typically would have a library commission meeting that night, but we're meeting previously, because this is, I believe, the beginning of Passover, I don't know if that's relevant to anyone.
It's not a toll week.
Just pointing it out.
Well, it's going to be that meeting that, I'm going to have the report done, but I was talking with the applicant about the draft report having to be.
Well, I would ask you, my understanding is that the special meeting process for the first week of May, and going back to the reasoning for our flexibility, we've typically submitted our application end of October, early November, and we were told that there are, there are a lot of applicants on the docket, so, you know, the earliest possibility was in February, and we came ourselves and suggested that, you know, we could request a special meeting, so we did, so we kind of stuck with that, if that was a possibility, whatever the board's earliest availability was essentially, to hear us.
Can we give us time, if Mike, the previous application might do the report this 10:50 draft, and we need the plans to fine tune that report, but that's, which I think would be like.
So it gives you the time, and I believe it would be made further if that's better for.
Yeah, that would be after the holiday season, so it works for me, it works for the board.
That's awesome. That's awesome. That's awesome. That's awesome. That's okay.
That'll be a normal meeting, right, you know, will that be a regular meeting?
No, that's the first Wednesday, so.
Oh, that's right, the meeting discussion.
So we can't roll this into our regular meeting on the 19th?
Well, she's, that's not a discussion an executive, we have a backup, a meeting, and there's a bunch of applicants, and then the board's going to have to make a decision on applicants who are scheduled, but actual continuums, how is that handled? Do they go to the back of the line, and then get pushed to the next meeting? That's something we have to discuss ourselves, the board does.
I think we want to pay for everything.
Yeah, I mean, I think that time works for me perfectly, because if I get the report done in two to three weeks, by end of March, the applicant's time to review the report, and then I think the intent is they're trying to streamline it, so that they address everything prior to coming to the meeting, like the prior application, correct? So there's no surprises, and all the mechanics, the engineering, the site lighting, all this stuff is discussed prior, so that it's cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
Make third?
Make third is.
All favor?
All right.
Close? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You very much.
So would like to move that we go into executive session?
Make the motion.
Turn off the YouTube?
Yeah, I need to turn, let's turn off, let's turn off.
Yeah, yank this.